City Council meeting of Monday, April eighth is called to order at six P M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Viera is absent. Councilmember Condit?
Here.
Councilmember DeRocette?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
And Vice Mayor Rhino?
Here. Could we have the invocation, please, by Pastor Randy Norman and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you, Council, for inviting me to give the invocation. If you'd bow your heads and pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance and wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in a meaningful matter that glorifies your name. Allow us to grow closer together as a group and nurture the bonds of our community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect our community, and continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth and for the greater glory of you. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have a presentation of certificate of recognition to Olga Castaneda, the librarian of the Series Branch Library, and I'd like to read it. City of Series Certificate of Recognition presented to Olga Castaneda, Series Branch Librarian, in honor of Jean and Clyde Dunlap Award from Learning Quest. Thank you for your service and dedication to the Series community. Your contributions are important to our success and the success of our future generations. If I could have Ms. Castaneda stand forward.
Vice Mayor Rhino, council members, nothing gets done in isolation, as you can all attest to. I accept this great honor on behalf of my colleagues at the Series Library and at the Stanislas County Library System. Without your support, I couldn't do my work, and that includes everyone, from the library director to volunteers who come in, donate their time, resources, so that we all live in a better community. Thank you so much.
And thank you again. I've been a Series Library patron for many years, a library cardholder for over fifty, and I don't know that everyone really realizes how many services the library really can provide. It's a wonderful opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have citizen communication to the council on matters not included on the agenda. I have two speaker cards, and again, if Ms. Castaneda would like to come up.
Thank you, yes. Once again, one of our core services is to provide programs, and our programs are thanks to the support of the Friends of the Series Library. This Thursday, we'll be having a magician come to us, and on Thursday, April twenty-fifth, the Series Library is partnering with the City of Series to honor all children and literacy in celebrating the Day of the Child, Day of the Book, and it will take place here, in this very room. So, we hope that all families with children come. Something really special that day is that we will be having the first five California Express van. They will come with a wealth of information and giveaways. So, we really encourage all families with young children to come. There'll be several nonprofits offering information and providing crafts for children. We look forward to having our community come out for that event. And also, we will be having adult programs. This morning, we had the first of two financial wellness programs for adults. The next one will be taking place on Monday, the twenty-ninth. It is a lawyer who will be presenting this workshop, and we really encourage anyone to come out. Today's program was relevant to young people, and it's really not just for caregivers, it's for anyone who is interested in learning about finances. We have many other programs, and each month, we have a calendar of events, what's happening countywide, and also what's happening in our Series branch. Thank you for listening, and thanks for your support.
Thank you. The next speaker card is from Mike and David.
Hello, and good afternoon. My name is Mike Ferrer with Fired Up Grill in Series. We're a new local business that just opened up this past nine months, and we just wanted to voice our concerns on a few things as far as the city ordinance, some banners and flags, and marketing within the city. David, he's our main manager of the building, and he can pretty much let you guys know that I agree with how much our business has fallen since we actually aren't allowed to put the flags out. That's a concern, especially being a business in a shopping center that does not have any visible marquee of any such business that's located in that shopping center. When we signed our lease, we wanted to actually, you know, kind of like went in blind, didn't even know or pay attention to the marquee system of that shopping center. We're excited to get the business open and going and bringing a different type of food to this community. But since we have taken our, asked to take our banners down three, four weeks ago, we actually went down about forty-four percent in sales just on foot traffic alone, which is a huge hit to a new business, you know? First year's detrimental to a business's health. We employ fifteen, sixteen local kids within the community that never would have had a job probably unless we, so we know we'll give you a try. We'll teach you guys and train you and show you what to do. I'm gonna let David talk a little bit about what we do and why we're here.
Hi, folks. My name is David Lawson. Like you said, I'm a part of Fired Up Grill, and I kind of run a lot of the numbers and things of that nature on a day-to-day basis. Like you said, we are down about forty-four point two percent in the three weeks that we have not been able to actually fly our banners out. There's one thing that I, I'm a big person on taking polls of businesses and stuff that's going on in the area. El Roselle was there for a while, as you obviously probably know, but then with it being closed for two years, after talking to a lot of our foot traffic, me just kind of going out and hitting the streets, unfortunately, it wasn't a spot that people liked to endure, for the most part, from the group that I've actually talked to. And then being dormant for two years, or just about that much at that time, Mitchell's a tunnel vision when you're on that road. I mean, you're either coming off the highway and going straight to Hatch or crossing over or back and forth, and with all the trees and everything else on the side, it's really hard to actually get a glimpse of anything actually going on inside of a shopping center that actually has no identification as to what's going on within the shopping center It's, you try not to take it personally when you don't start seeing the traffic and stuff coming through, and I know I personally, I, I take it personally because, you know, with being in charge of the day-to-day operations, I feel like it's always my, my personal agenda to make sure that I keep business inside the store, and it's just, it's becoming really hard. And I do understand the ordinance, that's, it's not what we're here for, but we're just trying to understand what provisions that can possibly come into the future in order to keep, obviously, new Series businesses coming in, because we do want to be a part of the community. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Westbrook, we allow new businesses a special allowance for banners, correct? Brand openings and such?
Yes, we do.
But there is no, they, they can't have banners every day forever, because if every storefront did that, then all you would see would be banners going down Mitchell, and would anyone really even pay attention to yours if there's seven more next to them? When we have our discussion on the Muni code update, is that going to include the sign ordinance as well?
Yes, it will.
And do you know at what point we're gonna be discussing that? I mean, we're gonna start discussing it soon, correct?
Correct. Likely, looking like with the budget, we'll likely start that conversation in June. We're trying to organize which of those code sections we're going to take and in what order. We would likely take the higher priority ones sooner rather than later, based on feedback, so that would likely be, likely code enforcement and signs would be the, probably the top two in terms of priorities. We're still working on that schedule, but likely June is when it starts.
And of course, those will be public meetings, but maybe you could give your information to the city clerk, so when we do have that discussion, then you could come and have your input as well?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item? If so, come forward and state your name, please.
Jean Yegley, Series. There's still continued to be a problem in the city here. I've been up here, might as well bang my head in the wall here, 'cause it never gets taken care of. It's not just me, it's all... It was all. But anyway, there's been an ongoing problem with noise disturbance in the Series for years. Some individuals and some of you people on the city council live in areas where you don't have those problems, but, you know, maybe it's the price of the homes or just a good neighborhood, and people have respect for one another, but there's a lot of people here don't, in the city, don't have respect for people. And me complaining all these years, a lot of people don't think I'm telling the truth. This goes on and on sometimes on the weekends, for several hours. This is right next door to my home, you know? I've called the police department on these people before. I don't know if they've ever been cited. Matter of fact, officer was nice enough to call me and say, "Have they ever been cited?" And I go, "Evidently not." Excuse me. I'll get it off here. There we go. So, I heard the officer come next door. These people lived in this house for about four years now, and it's not just that home, there's other homes around the area. Most of them, the police have been to their house, they seem to calm down a little bit, but you have those people that just violate the code all the time, doesn't matter if the officer comes by at all or nothing. And one of the things that I questioned the officer about was, why don't they just punch in the address and find out how many times they've been out there? Because sometimes the officer goes to a home where there's a noise disturbance, and they've been out there many times before, so if they hear it again, they should give them a citation at that point, 'cause they have a record. They have a record of how many times I've called, because an officer knew my name. And he says, "I got seven years on my computer that shows how many times you called all these different people in your neighborhood." It's ridiculous, nothing gets taken care of, and I have to live with this? And then officers have been out to my house, and I have nothing against law enforcement, I totally support them. I don't know what the curriculum is for what they have to do, you know, and take care of things, but some of the officers have been blatant enough to tell me, "Oh, you should get different windows in your house." "Oh, you should move out of the neighborhood." "Oh, you know, this is what you should expect for living in the neighborhood, that's the makeup of the people." I'm sixty-eight years old, I should not have to adjust to nothing when there's laws and codes, and they're not being taken care of. I'm really upset that this has gone this far. How much more do I have to put up with before I break, before I end up in the damn newspaper? It's old, it's really old. This has been going for over twenty years out of my thirty years here, and nothing's being done. Thank you.
Mr. Wells, is that also a top priority, is the noise ordinance?
That is part of the municipal code that's gonna be updated as well.
And when code enforcement does their report at our next meeting, are they going to be talking about noise, or they don't have anything to do with it, it's strictly the police?
Generally, noise is not normally a code enforcement activity, 'cause most of the noise complaints are after hours, so it's normally a law enforcement activity, and the noise is generally investigated by law enforcement rather than code enforcement, so it's not anticipated to be part of that April twenty-second conversation.
Councilmember Klein?
You know, I can, I can sympathize with Mr. Yegley, because it was brought to my attention a while back that it doesn't matter what the decibel ratio is or whatever, but if it's a nuisance to your neighbors, okay, where it is inside the house, then it's, should be a common courtesy that the neighbors turn it down, okay? That they, my understanding, talking to a couple of guys from Series PD, that they can be cited, okay, because it is a public nuisance, and it is, no matter what the decibel levels are, but it hits the surrounding houses, and, you know, it is an issue, you know? So, whether it's part of the noise level or whatever, but if it's in a residential area, it should be taken care of. It's one thing to be at a venue like the community center or at the parks or anything like that, where we have certain ordinances in place, but when it's in a residential area, you know, I agree with Mr. Yegley, he should not have to tolerate that, so...
So, it really sounds like it isn't a matter of us looking at our noise ordinance, but the fact that it needs to be enforced.
Well, the noise ordinance, as it's written, is not as tight as we'd like it to be, it's not as defendable as we'd like it to be, so that's one of the reasons for the update, is making sure that it's clear, definitive, and it's one thing to cite somebody, it's another thing for them, for it to stick, and two, for it to be paid. So, right now, we, we do cite folks, it does happen on a regular basis. In his particular case, I don't know the history there, so I'd have to look into that, but there's, there's two aspects of it, right? Making sure that it's legally enforceable, and, you know, we don't have a set decibel reading, and it's different for different times of the day for most other codes, so we want to get, make sure that our code is written specifically, and then we have to enforce it as well.
Well, I don't think you have to have a decibel reading when you're in your house and all of your windows and doors are closed, and you can hear your neighbors blasting their music.
Of course, but you also have property rights as well, so we have to make sure that there is a clear violation of the code in order for it to be enforced.
Well, I'm gonna agree with Mr. Yegley as well.
I agree, I'm not disagreeing with him, but I'm, I'm telling you that we, we have a code that is not as defined as we, as we need it to be. There's clearly an opportunity with what he showed in the video for us to be able to enforce.
Okay, so that will be one of the, the top items to discuss as well?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone, Mr. Yegley?
That particular code says it can't go any further than the two individuals or individuals in a closed area, it can't go beyond, those two people can hear, well, I'm using two people, but people in a confined area. It can't go beyond that and disturb the people that live in surrounding areas. And I've requested many times the city council to have the police department go over this particular code, so they know the parameters, and to make copies when they get a noise disturbance call, and have those in English and Spanish. I hope we don't have to go to any other languages, but that's a possibility too. But, so they have something in their car when somebody says they don't speak English. They need to get that word out, and the officer that came out before, he was a very nice young man, and, of course, I didn't go outside, 'cause that just entices your neighbors, but he said that he was looking into that particular part of the noise disturbance section about can't go beyond the area that you're in, meaning a contained chamber or, or a car or something like that. But they need to start giving paperwork out to these individuals, and then warn them that if they come back again, they're gonna get a citation, no questions asked.
Councilmember Condit?
Yes, I just have a question for PD. What is the protocol when dealing with these noise complaints?
Okay. So traditionally, yes, we, we respond to noise complaints every day. Traditionally, on a first call to a residence, we try to give a verbal warning to the people at the residence. We feel it's only, only fair to do that. We do have an in-depth computer system, so we can see if we've had prior calls for service out at the residence, but as we all know, sometimes the occupants of residence change, so even because we may have been out to a certain residence, maybe they were renters a couple of months ago, maybe the people in there now are, are new renters or something like that. So, again, we, we still try to, to, to be fair and, and give warnings for the most part, unless we know that they're habitual people that we've continually dealt with, and sometimes we may issue citations on the first response and, and not a warning. There is penal code section four fifteen, subsection E, specifically which covers loud noise violations. Those are sections that we can cite for criminally, as a misdemeanor offense. However, in doing so, there has to be a victim, like, like all crimes, you have to have a victim to a crime, and many people that call us, they just want the noise abated, they don't necessarily want to be a victim to a crime, because we all know in order to be a victim, you now get subpoenaed to court, you have to testify, testify as a victim in a criminal court case, and now these people are actually gonna get some sort of fine or punishment, and most people don't really want things to go that far, they don't want their lives impacted that much. The people that do are people that have habitual problems, maybe with barking dogs or that music, you know, like was played earlier, and they've maybe tried to talk to their neighbors, or we've talked to them, and they just flat don't care, and now they're at their end rope, like this gentleman here for twenty-plus years or something, and he's saying, "Forget it, I'll be a victim, I'll sign whatever I need to sign, send me to court, 'cause I wanna do that." And we'll gladly do the paperwork for them and, and do that. Another option that we traditionally use is our admin citation process, and we use that one quite often. And that's where, again, usually, we show up to a residence, "Hey, we're gonna give you a verbal warning, if we come back, you'll be given an admin citation." It's a very simple process that we do, typically, the first citation is like a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine. If we have to come back again and issue another one, it's a five-hundred-dollar fine, and again, a third one is a thousand-dollar fine, and if the fines go unpaid, then of course, they get attached to the water bill system and things like that. If then the water bill doesn't get paid, the water gets shut off, and now we're looking at a code enforcement issue and uninhabitable dwelling without water. So, those are the current measures in place. I certainly urge anybody that has any issues to call us at the time it's occurring, because it is an issue that we kind of need to handle while it's happening. Of course, they may call, and by the time we get out there, 'cause we prioritize our calls, the music could have been stopped or whatnot, but even if that's the case, we could still issue a warning to the, to the residents, partygoers or whatnot. There's a whole, another subsection of, of codes if the loud noise is coming from a vehicle, and that's gonna be covered in the vehicle code section, and those are issued a lot, actually, via traffic violations. Thank you.
So, in Mr. Yegley's case, where the officers seem to go out there quite often to the same home, and they aren't issuing an admin site, that sounds to me like there's an internal problem in the police department that isn't necessarily something that an ordinance update is gonna take care of.
Well, and, and, and maybe there's not, not a citation being issued, I'm not certain. I don't know if the officers have, have relayed that information to Mr. Yegley or not. Maybe there has been citations written in the past, maybe there hasn't. I, I would have to look into that matter to find that, the answers to that.
Yeah, and the noise, there is some subjectivity to the noise, and that is a lot of times where the challenge comes into play, but I, I don't know Mr. Yegley's specific details, we'd have to look into that, but we, we have the record, so we can find out.
All right.
And if I could comment just, just further, I would certainly suggest, Mr. Yegley or anybody else, that, you know, 'cause we, we constantly go to call, calls to calls, so it's very common that we will handle a call for service, and then we immediately leave to go handle another call and another call and another call. And a lot of times in, in certain situations, we may not follow up with the person that called unless they request it. So, I would, I would advise that if you want the officer to follow up with you and let you know the outcome of what the officer did, whether they issued a warning to the folks, a citation to the folks or whatnot, when you call, just let the dispatchers know. I would like follow-up from the officer, and we will gladly always provide that service before we leave.
Thank you. Councilmember Klein?
When you say an admin citation, do you still have to have a victim on that admin citation?
No, the admin citation process is much simpler for us, it's more of an internal citation versus criminal.
Okay, when you say a follow-up, let's say Mr. Yegley wants a follow-up thing, would you follow up with him at his residence, or would you make a phone call, or how would you do that?
However he prefers. A lot of these people want to remain anonymous, so as long as they provide their phone number, and if they request a follow-up via phone, we can certainly call them when we get back to the station, or call them from our beat on our cell phone or something like that. So, you know, so it doesn't show that now we're just walking next door to go contact the person, you know, 'cause then it kind of gags up on who the caller was.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council on an item that's not on the agenda?
Good evening, John Warren Series. From my understanding, the code review is now being pushed into June. Previously, it was supposed to start last year, and then it was gonna be April of this year, and now it's June? What's the exact date that this is gonna begin?
Mr. Wells?
Somebody has to know.
We are currently planning for June.
When?
Now that we have a full staff. I do not have a date yet.
It was supposed to be this month, and it was supposed to be last year.
Yeah, we were down three department head positions, and we did not have the staff to pull that off. We do now, when we are scheduling it, likely would be the second meeting in June, because the first meeting in June is when we, the council will be adopting our budget.
So, what's the date of the second meeting in June, which is darn near July?
June twenty-fourth.
Which is almost July. So, is it going to begin on June twenty-fourth?
That is the current plan.
Thank you.
If there's anyone else you'd like to approach the council?
I'm Joe Perez, and I lived here for twenty-seven years now, and I have more reasons than you can imagine. First of all, about parking spots. There's, uh, uh, what do you call it, apartments across my street, across my house. All the people, they don't know where, where they're supposed to park. They park right out on the street, my, my side, sometimes a family comes around, I gotta take my cars to cut the grass. I can't do that. Not even the, when the sweepers go by, they cannot sweep. Even the neighbors across the street too, they park in my, my property. What can I do to stop that?
Well, if they're parking on the street, I believe anyone can park on the street, Mr. Wells?
Yeah, I mean, street parking is public parking, so there are limitations on the timeframe, how long someone can park there, but generally, street parking is public parking.
They park for three days in there. That's like that.
Under our municipal code, that is allowable in most vehicles.
Next door neighbor, he has three cars on our, our driveway, plus three cars on the street. They block my view to both sides. What can I do now? Get a wreck?
I don't, I don't know where your specific location is. We can get his information, we can look into it and see what the, if there's potential solutions. If the vehicle's all operative, are there challenges with those vehicles? I don't know what specific location you're speaking to, so if you can give us your address, then we can follow up.
I've been calling the cops anyway, 'cause there are people speed up in there, and they're wrapped tires. It's right there on the corner.
What, what street are we? What street are we referring to?
Ninth and Broding. It's every weekend.
You're not alone. We do have speeding concerns in those same situations and other locations of town as well. But we will pass along to our traffic division to do some enforcement in that area.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council? Next, we have appointments to boards and commissions. Mayor's appointment to Stanislaus Homeless Alliance, Mr. Wells?
Thank you, I'm Vice Mayor Rhino. This evening is a culmination of a bunch of work that has gone over the past about six months where myself and other city managers from around the county have a meeting to work on trying to change the structure for how homeless funding is allocated within the county. So currently, under a program of what's called CSOC, Continuum System of Care, that funding is organized through a loose organization of nonprofits and folks providing homeless services. And so, under the auspices of the Focus on Prevention, Stanislaus County has worked to kind of change that structure. And they're hoping to be able to funnel the $12 to $15 million per year that Stanislaus County gets in homeless funding that comes through a variety of sources through one entity that has measurable and a structure in place that can be more responsive and reactive to the needs of the homeless community and the changes that are kind of going on over time. So the action this evening is, per the mayor's direction, appointing himself and myself as the alternate to this new structured COC that will allow for an alignment of regional goals related to homelessness and primarily allocating the resources that the county is getting to focus it on homeless efforts. So it would be a monthly meeting to meet with all these service providers and to kind of coordinate those efforts to make sure that we are directing those funds appropriately, consistently to address this issue that obviously we're seeing, not just in the county but in the state, in a much more focused effort than what has been done in the past. The Focus on Prevention efforts have identified that we used to have a lot of silos and a lot of locations were funding and folks didn't know who was getting what funding and who was doing what. So this effort is trying to put that umbrella together with a more focused effort on those efforts throughout the county. And so coordinating individual cities' efforts with the county's efforts and so that we're being strategic in how those funds are being placed. So the appointment of the mayor as the structure, as an elected official with the appointed official, the city manager or CEO, as the backup or the alternate attending those meetings. So there's consistency through each organization. There's representative from the county, the cities, and then the other groups like Focus on Prevention will all be represented by this new COC. First meeting would start hopefully by the end of April. And then bylaws will be adopted and they will move forward on the structure of moving this program forward.
A few months ago, wasn't there a request for us to join some kind of a consortium with the county so we could be considered for the HEEP funding?
So the HEEP funding is one aspect of that. We were being asked under that program to declare a homeless crisis that would enable our city to be eligible for those funding. It was not this program, but it was a similar effort. This involvement wouldn't change any of that conversation with HEEP. But likely under this scenario, HEEP funding would come through this new entity.
Because it does say it's developing recommendations for allocation. But since we didn't want to be a part of that, by being part of this group, is that going to affect us?
It doesn't change anything because we still made that determination and we're not eligible.
Okay, Councilmember Klein?
Vice Mayor Rhino, you asked the same questions I was just going to address as far as how it was going to affect us with our previous action that we took. So with listening to Mr. Wells and your questions, I feel that what that does is it gives us a seat at the table for at least a dialogue. So if anything is pushed our way, at least we'll have somebody there to help out with the wishes of this council. So.
As I like to say, you're either at the table or on the menu.
Right, and, you know, Vice Mayor Rhino already led the direction which I wanted and so.
Do we need any kind of a vote on this? We do.
You can open up the public?
Oh, I'm sorry. Does anyone from the public wish to address this item? Seeing no one, can we have a motion?
I move to have the mayor appointed to the Stanislaus Homeless Alliance with Mr. Wells being the alternate second.
We have the roll call.
Councilmember Condit?
Aye.
Councilmember Durasit?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the city council that has a conflict with any items on the agenda? Seeing none. We will move to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. Is there anyone on the council that would like an item pulled?
Item number five, letter B.
Five B. Anyone else? Anyone from the public? Who said item seven? Mr. Pratt? Anyone else? If we have a motion, please?
I'll move to adopt one, two, three, eight, four, five, eight, six, eight, nine, and 10.
A second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Condit?
Aye.
Councilmember Durasit?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Item five B, redevelopment and economic development department monthly report. Councilmember Condit?
Yes, is Mr. Hallam here?
No, unfortunately, he had to leave.
Okay. Well, I was hoping to get an update on the Kmart property from Mr. Hallam.
I'd be happy to provide that update if you're still inclined. So Mr. Hallam, myself, Mr. Westbrook participated in a conference call, not last Friday but the Friday before, speaking with the owner and his business partner. So as the council knows, this individual purchased the property a couple of years ago as an investment. He has been indicated on Friday that Kmart is still under lease. And so as a result, the lease payments are still being made. They have not canceled that lease, have not terminated the lease, so they're still bound by the conditions of that lease. Although they closed the store. Sears, who is the entity that owns Kmart, has emerged from bankruptcy. And the owner, Mr. Lampart, has made indications that they were going to be trying to salvage that company. So as a result, the owner of Kmart property has indicated that his hands are somewhat tied from doing anything. So we had a pretty decent conversation with him of other ideas that we've pitched to him, of other opportunities for the site. And at this point, he's asked that those communications just go straight to him and he will vet those ideas and those inquiries accordingly. But at this point, his hands are a little tied from doing anything more pressing or moving forward until he gets that lease terminated since he is still under contract with Kmart.
And I also noticed that the N-shaped building is also empty. Is there any update on that building?
No update at this point. We understand they are marketing, but no update at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else with a question? Councilmember Condit, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I move to approve item number five, letter B.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Condit?
Aye.
Councilmember Durasit?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Item number seven, resolution number 201939, approving the submission of a grant application for the Low Carbon Transit Operations Program in the amount of $15,242 for free transit fares and authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute all grant agreement documents. Mr. Pratt?
Dave Pratt of Series. $15,000 don't seem like a lot. Do you have any idea how long that might last? And are you going to have to get other, try to get other grants for doing that?
This is primarily for the fiscal year 1920, the way the grant is structured, is for one year.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else with a question on that item? Councilmember Klein?
Mr. Pratt, you know, I had a, I had a conversation with Daniel Padilla on it. And I was on Stan Cog. What happens if we don't meet our fare box ratio? Stan Cog turns around and takes some of our transit funds away from us. And last year, they fined us. And I'm trying to find out whether we're going to get fined again for fiscal year 1920, or excuse me, 1819, okay? And what they'll do is they'll take some of our transit funds away from us. But what this does for fiscal year 1920, that takes us out of that loop. So once that's spent, if memory serves me for being on Stan Cog, then the whole process goes over. Then we have a, basically a get out of jail free card for three years of losing any kind of transit funds that is offered to the city of Series. So we start this whole process all over. So this does help us as far as, what we get as far as transit funds.
Could I have a motion, please?
Move to approve resolution number 201939?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Condit?
Aye.
Councilmember Durasit?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
The next item we have is discussion items. City Special Events and Community Event and Activities Grant Program Discussion and Direction. Mr. Wells and Mr. Lor.
So I'll start and then I'll turn it over to Matt. So as council recalls, we had this item scheduled for the February goal-setting meeting. Ran out of time with that meeting. And so staff has met internally to kind of revisit this. And as we get into the budget season, wanted to get council direction on kind of the three primary events that we do as well as how the TOT program may impact that. So I'll turn it over to Matt.
Yes, currently, the city offers three citywide special events that are free to the community. They include the trunk or treat, which was our first annual event last year, which we had over 28 businesses and nonprofits participate. We have our annual Christmas Tree Festival and the grand opening of Christmas Tree Lane, which is always the first Saturday of December. And we have our Six Concerts in the Park, which start the first Tuesday in June and end in mid-July. Right now, there's funding for the first two events of about $5,000 a year. And this year, Concerts in the Park funding was taken out of the community in an event activities program, $4,000, to fund those. One of the challenges with these events are, is I think in the report we stated is, back in fiscal year 08, 09, there was almost $13,000 to fund these events. Currently, there, with the two fundings, the $5,000 and the $4,000, about $9,000. With these increased expenses and everything, it's becoming challenging to meet the demand of the community and to offer them free to the community. These are great events that engage our community. We have a lot of participation of kids and adults in our events. So tonight, I'm just kind of looking for direction of how to move forward next year with funding these events in the budget, that we can prepare that for the finance department, which April 15th, our budget modules close for the departments. But also, is there any additional events that the city council would like to see in the city of Series?
Is there anyone on the council that would like to ask a question? Anyone in the audience?
I think it's important to have these three. You know, the one in the middle, obviously, the annual Christmas festival and the grand opening of Christmas Tree Lane. People come from all over California for the most part to take part in that. As far as the funding's concerned, I have no problem with, you know, trying to find as much money as we can to assist the programs, all three programs. I know the trunk or treat, this was the first year and I was kind of skeptical. I really liked it being in this facility. I know that we had a lot of support and people help from the schools, S Club and all different types of groups from the schools because they got to do hours, community service hours and so forth and so on. I don't know if, you know, part of the TOT, if we can use some of the money out of the TOT. I know we haven't used any of it yet this year so far, except I think $4,000. But, you know, I think all three of these things we need to keep and we need to get them funded, so.
Councilmember Klein?
No, I mean, my comments were pretty much in the same direction that Councilmember Durasit. You know, when we put this TOT tax on the ballot and it was passed, you know, my recommendation is that, you know, money that we received over and above, we had the previous years, a certain percentage of it would go to Parks and Rec to help fund some of these activities and to, you know, to modernize them a little bit, whether it's decorations or new equipment, banners, whatever they needed to do, and so help out with that. And I still feel the same way that, you know, our citizens, we don't pay the TOT tax unless you stay in the hotel here. Basically, it comes from individuals that come from, out of the area that stay in our hotels. And, you know, I think our citizens should be rewarded, you know, to a fact that it's, you know, it's for us to benefit from. So, you know, I still believe that a certain percentage of whatever we have over and above, you know, should go to the recreation department, not for administration or anything like that, but to help fund these activities. You know, with that said, you know, I still think that we need to go in that direction. And whether it's 5% or 7% of those funds.
I had asked the question previously about doing something downtown for the Christmas. And I had been approached by one of the store owners that had asked me about it because we had done it previously. And I would like to see that included. And I know from when I worked in the planning department and we did it, it didn't take a lot of money. And it basically was myself that put the program together. So I think we could probably do, at least try this year. I know we've talked before about with the new landscaping downtown, we were going to have the twinkle lights in the trees. And I'm not sure what happened with that, even to add something to the downtown. I mean, it looks so much better than it used to. It seems like we need to continue to build on that.
So the electrical is all there. We haven't, as we're developing the budget right now, there's not additional funding right now for the actual lights. But that is what we're looking for a direction. If that is a program the council wants to support, then those are items we'll try to figure out ways to put into the budget. But this is why we're having this conversation now, is we're getting ready to put this budget together of events. You know, I wasn't here when we had that event, so can you give us a little context of what that event looked like? Or what's in your mind?
We had a Christmas tree and we had Santa and we did pictures and we had cookies. And we did flyers that went to all the school kids. And we had a really big turnout. I mean, it was great. And I think that's what the downtown businesses would like to see, is people coming to the downtown to see what is available. But I know that you and I had talked previously even about just doing the white twinkle lights like other downtowns do. And I thought we had money left over in that contract to do that.
Did not.
Did not.
Yeah. That's what we were hoping, if there was money left over and we, the landscape maintenance, we extended that landscape maintenance through June 30th to it so that it didn't hit the general fund. And that's what took up the balance of the contract. So looking for kind of the direction, we haven't estimated what that cost would be for lights in the downtown. But that's something that we would do if council's direction is part of this budget and have it as something for consideration.
Well, I would like to see them downtown just because I think when you go to, you know, Livermore or other cities, and with ours being right off of the freeway, it just kind of draws people's eyes anyway. And then if you've got the little lights in the trees, it would really, I think, maybe make more people come to the downtown.
In terms of that event relative to like the Christmas Tree Lane Festival, would you see that happening, you know, this first Saturday in December is when that festival's been held? How would you, just trying to, are those, just so they're not competing?
No, no, and they didn't compete before because the Christmas Tree Lane has been around for many years. But when we did the Christmas Tree Downtown, we did it like midweek or on a Thursday. And it was late afternoon when the kids were out of school and the stores were still open. So it kind of drew, you know, a different group of people down there.
Yeah, just trying to understand the context. I didn't participate, so I want to make sure that, you know, Matt and I can have that conversation of how that might work. I would assume that the businesses were engaged in that conversation? Was that driven by them or?
No, it was part of the CDRAB.
Okay.
And, you know, it could be a Thursday night, maybe they would stay open later, you know, some kind of interaction with them and try to draw more people to the downtown area. Councilmember Condit?
Yes, I think it's a great idea to have these events downtown. My question is, is would any of this funding be able to go to landscaping or maintenance of the downtown? Would that be able to be used at all for that?
Do you mean the TOT funds?
The TOT? Yes, these funds.
So, so the, the monies that we're talking about in the part A of the staff report is what's we're currently budgeting, right? So what budget expense out of the Department one hundreds, the general fund, those allocation right now is only five thousand dollars in the current budget.
Sure.
So the budget for next year would likely, with what I'm hearing from the council, would increase to allow for additional funding out of that line item. The landscaping for downtown for the maintenance, as it's anticipated right now, is to be funded at a CDRAB. So different funding, not general fund, that it comes from the funding that those property owners are paying that's in and above what everybody else pays.
Sure.
So that landscape maintenance is separate, but if the council wants to supplement that or pay for that with general fund dollars, that is a budget decision.
Sure, I would, I would just like our downtown to look as best as possible when these events and when we attract new people into our downtown, I would like to look tip top. That's all, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, so the CDRAB, so the way that will be done next year, as of right now, it's still being maintained by the contractor under the, the, the original contract through June thirtieth, and then we'll be contracting separately for that work for just the downtown. So that's an RFP that Jeremy and his staff are working on currently, so we'll have a dollar amount for budget for next year.
Sure.
So that would start on July one.
And I am supportive of moving these events downtown. I just definitely would like a little, little touch and grace on our landscaping.
Yeah, we don't want to move the, the Christmas Tree Lane downtown, but just have a separate, separate event.
And I agree with you, I don't think it would pull away from the lane whatsoever, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Mr. Brant?
Okay, you, you triggered my, triggered my memory.
Uh-oh.
I remember putting up a Christmas tree at where the clock used to be.
That's correct.
Okay, because we decorated it, and then that tree got moved over to the gazebo.
That's correct.
Okay, and you're absolutely right. It was done like on a Thursday night, and as me sitting back there now, where the clock is right now, we could put up a, or a Christmas tree could be put up there and have an event downtown, and maybe do something with the, the garden club, and then take that tree, or leave that tree, you know, whatever, and put it over to the gazebo. Because I mean, I just remember being in the middle of the intersection there decorating that crazy tree and people driving by, you know, and all that stuff, you know, but.
Did you stay for the cookies?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, well, and see, and that, and the cookies came from.
Tower Training Center.
Exactly, yeah.
But CDRAB actually paid for them.
Oh, right, okay, yeah, but I remember the big old boxes and all that stuff, you know, it's like, almost like Christmas, the opening of Christmas Tree Lane down there, how they also donated cookies to all the workers down there at the Parks Department. So, anyway, that's my two cents worth.
Thank you.
I will get some numbers back to you guys on downtown decorations and put some numbers in for the budget for next year for these special events. The second part of tonight's, part B, is the community event and activities grant program, and I know a council subcommittee met, I want to say in April, May of last year, and put this program together. It was modeled something similar to Turlock and other cities that offer a grant program or sponsorship to sponsor local events that promote the community. This did not happen this fiscal year. Like we said, there was twenty thousand dollars in the budget. Four thousand of that was put to concerts in the park, leaving sixteen thousand left in this year's fiscal year, but trying to get some direction from the council tonight, how to move forward with this, that I can get these applications out if we decide to move forward with this program tonight, out to the community to apply as soon as possible since the funding starts July first, for, if people want to apply for, our organizations want to apply for these programs or events.
So do we know why we didn't go forward with this earlier?
Yeah, so in May, when we brought the draft as a result of the TOT committee's recommendations, at that time, when Ms. Ferris left the organization and the council froze that position, we didn't have staff to move the program forward. So when Mr. Lor was hired, well, we revisited, wanted to get council direction, February the goal setting, obviously we ran out of time for that, so this is bringing it back for council direction. At the time, the council was ready to move forward with it, we put the money in the budget, but we didn't have the staffing to pull the program off, so now we're looking for your direction for next year, now that we have staff to be able to implement this program and what the allocation is, as you remember from the TOT committee, the recommendation was twenty thousand dollars in the first year and then to go to forty thousand dollars next year. We just want to check in to make sure that's still consistent with what your expectations are, and then we would bring the program back for adoption, create the dates, and put that in the budget for next year. But in, in line with this other conversation, we thought it was relevant in terms of how those expenditures may or may not be, you know, combined or, or pulled apart, do we want to budget twenty thousand or forty thousand? So we're looking for council direction as we budget for next year.
Ms. Dean, do you have what our TOT funds are?
I don't have it with me, but it is, I do know, just because I've been doing revenue projections, it's slightly above, I'm thinking it's going to come in around two hundred thousand, maybe a little more.
And what was it before we had the increase?
Just under a hundred thousand.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was half, five percent to ten percent, so generally.
Councilmember Klein?
So, you know, with Vice Mayor Rhino asking the question, why it wasn't implemented, you know, I know we went through situations as far as staffing and different things like that, but where are we now with staffing? We have Tracy and Cambria, that's both, both are gone, so you have those positions yet to fill. Have you filled those positions? Are we going to run into a staffing problem as far as getting this stuff done and implemented for next fiscal year?
At this time, I think if we can get direction from the council tonight, we can get the application out to the community, and we should not have any challenges. We are hiring a lot of staff right now with the summer season coming, but I want to get this moved forward. This is part of Mr. Wells bringing me on to the city, was to get this program moving forward.
So the next question is, since we didn't spend the sixteen thousand dollars for fiscal year eighteen nineteen, we are going to start off fresh for nineteen twenty at what level?
Whatever direction the council would like us.
I mean, I think it was in there for forty thousand for next year, I, I mean.
That was the original, that was the original concept.
Right, so are we going to go with forty and add the sixteen that wasn't done this year, or are we just going to stay with the forty and try to stay on track?
Well, I think the reason that we did the twenty and forty was to see how the twenty went the first year, is that right, Councilmember DeRocet?
That is correct. We, we spent half of, or we were going to spend half of it, and obviously the program's not up and running. You know, there's two things we can do. We can either put and use fifty-six thousand dollars for the following year, which I don't think we'd spend all that, or you put sixteen thousand dollars back into the general fund. I, I think the program needs to stay. I think the forty thousand dollars, I mean, we had just not yourself, we had other members within the community that were on that panel, and that's what we said the desire was, to move forward, and I think that's the direction we have to go.
But, but my question is, if we had said twenty thousand the first year, but we didn't really have a first year, so instead of jumping to forty, should we try it at twenty, or should we just forget the first year and just go to forty?
No, because that was only for half of the year.
Oh, that's correct.
Yeah, so I think we take the forty thousand and, you know, maybe hold on to this, well, I'd say just put the sixteen thousand back into the general fund, because it is general fund money anyway.
I, I would agree with you.
I would agree with Councilman DeRocet.
I, I, I can agree, so we'll start off with what fiscal, with, with what year two was, at forty thousand.
Yes.
And put the sixteen thousand back into the general fund.
Yeah.
I can agree.
Do we, do we need a vote on that, or not?
No, it's just direction.
Okay.
You know, so you, you'll vote on it as part of the budget, but that's what we'll build the budget on the basis of that.
And I will get the proposal and the packet back to you guys quickly, that we can get this out before July first to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember referrals, are there any council members that would like to have an agenda item placed on a future agenda?
Yes, I was just curious, do we have any sort of employee recognition such as employee of the year or an acknowledgement of service?
We currently don't. Actually, the last, as mentioned at the goal setting meeting, this is something of, of interest for us to try and get that back into the program. Our last two management meetings, we've created a concept for an employee engagement, which will include that, so that is something we are working on.
Okay, I'd like to see that on a future agenda. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go to reports. Councilmember Klein?
I have nothing to report.
Councilmember DeRocet?
Nothing.
Councilmember Condit?
Yes, on Saturday, I participated in a ride along with Series Fire. It was a great experience, and I would like to thank Chief Wise and Battalion Chief Serpa for arranging that for me. Chief, you're doing a great job, keep up the good work. Also want to thank Matt and Crystal and our recreation team and Series Fire for their efforts in making Tiny Tots baseball a, a success. I was also made aware that the city of Modesto and the city of Ripon have utilized grants for license plate readers for their police department. I would, I would hope that we could possibly look into this, and as always, I will conduct my city office hours here at the community center between twelve and two, so I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Rhino. Just to, to respond to the, the grants for the license plate readers, so that, the grant that Modesto and Ripon have used, the, the Burn JAG grant, we've used a number of years and gotten different technology over the years from, from vests and a number of other categories. This year, and the draft budget that PD is working on, as was mentioned earlier, the internal budget is due to the finance department by April fifteenth, so the draft budget internally does include up to three license plate readers and a conversion of our existing license plate reader with the ability to, to apply some federal grants to that. So we do anticipate having a program in our existing budget for fiscal year nineteen twenty, so that will be helpful. A couple of items, just information, we do have an artist spotlight, was mentioned at the last meeting, so Keith Meyer will be here Thursday, this eve, this Thursday, four eleven at five thirty here in the community center. Ribbon cutting for Sam's Cafe is this Friday morning at ten AM, and the Centennial Committee meeting will be occurring next Tuesday at five o'clock, and that will be a pretty big meeting for the Centennial Committee as we'll be finalizing the brick locations and getting the schedule put together to start the, the construction on the monument, so that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Hall and Ann?
Mr. Grant.
Ms. Dean?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Rhino. Just to let the council know, my department recently implemented an employee of the month program within the finance department. We vote for ourselves, there are twelve of us, so we, we selected our, one of our accountants, Alondra Rodriguez, as our first employee of the month. So if you come into the finance department, on the wall between the accountant's and the finance director's office, there's a clock, and each picture frame represents a month and the time, and so Alondra is in April. The reward for this is, it's small, they get to have lunch with me, and they get to have my parking spot for a week.
Oh.
So, anyway, it's just, it's kind of a cute idea that one of the payroll clerks came up with doing that clock, and it's, it's worked out well.
Sounds like a great idea. Mr. Damas? Chief Wise? Lieutenant Perry? Mr. Padilla? Mr. Westbrook? Supervisor DiMartini? Seeing no one else in the audience, I will.
Jeremy.
I said Mr. Damas. I called him Mr. Damas. Tonight's meeting is adjourned until Monday, April the twenty-second, and the meeting's adjourned at seven oh four. Thank you.
Good job.
I did. And that's all. I had a.